And we are live.
The chair notes the time is six twelve P M. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge as Z B A chair. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with the roll call of Z B A members. The chair is present. Steve Judge, Mr. Meadows.
Present.
Mr. Slovater.
Present.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. White.
Present.
I also want to note that Ms. Greenbaum, an alternate member, is also present at this time. So Quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Ms. Jacinta Williams, a planner with the town of Amherst, and Dave Waschevich, Assistant Building Commissioner. Pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty one, extended by Chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty three, this meeting will be conducted via remote meetings. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter forty eight of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty eight and Article ten, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted in mail to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and recorded by town staff, and they may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube page or channel and the Z B A webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on the Zoom app or by pressing pound nine on their phone. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where the information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board does not rule by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of the hearing to file uh to file the decision. For a variance, the board has a hundred days from the date of the filing of the variance to file its decision. No decision is filed until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a twenty day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda. Consideration of the minutes for April tenth, two thousand and twenty five, public meeting and public hearing. Z B A F Y two thousand and twenty five dash eighteen seventeen Curtis Place, request to reconstruct a two-family dwelling non-occupied duplex that was destroyed by fire for property located at seventy-two Curtis Place, map eighteen D parcel five R N neighborhood residence zoning district. This was continued from March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, and they have asked for that to be continued until a date certain. Z B A F Y two thousand and twenty five dash nineteen sixty-five High Street, request to remove the owner occupancy requirement on an existing duplex and add a bedroom to a one to one of the dwelling units under sections three point three two one one. Also seeking modifications under section seven point one zero three and seven point one zero four for property located at sixty-five High Street, map fourteen B parcel ninety R G general residence zoning district. After that is a general public comment period. Other business not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours and adjournment. The first order of business tonight is to continue to consider the minutes from the April tenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting. Um has there has everybody had a chance to review those minutes? And do you have any uh changes or comments regarding those minutes? I've Mr. Henry, do you have something to say?
No, Mr. Chair.
Uh seems to me that the minutes are fine. And unless there's an accurately represent the meeting, um I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from February from April tenth, two thousand and twenty five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from April tenth, two thousand and twenty five. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, the vote occurs on the motion. This is a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing. The motion carries. The amendment, the minutes are approved. The next order of business is Z B A F Y two thousand and twenty five dash eighteen seventeen Curtis Place. Um this Ms. Williams, I understand that they wish to continue this matter. Have you received um a formal in request from the applicant?
Yes, they they wish to continue to June twelfth to the next date certain as the next date certain.
Okay. Um. I would entertain a motion to continue Z B A F Y two thousand and twenty five dash eighteen to June six o'clock on June twelfth, correct? Yep, June twelfth.
That is correct, yes.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. The next order of business is F Y two thousand and twenty five dash nineteen High Street, sixty-five High Street, request to remove the owner occupancy requirement on an existing duplex and to add a bedroom to the to one of the dwellings under sections three point three two one one. Also seeking modifications under section seven point one zero three and seven point one zero four for property located at sixty-five High Street, map fourteen B parcel ninety R G general residence zoning districts. Um. I want to just run through the draft project application report quickly regarding submissions. There's a number of submissions and I want to list them. And I'm not, they have, they're, they're labeled in the project application report. Um and it's somewhat confusing to me as to what they actually are, so I'm going to read them and refer to the project application report. On February twenty fifth, there was a Z B A original application submitted. On February tenth, there's a document entitled sixty-five High S K eighty, also one entitled eighty-six fourteen-three B K proposed light one and a light speak, a light sheet proposed light two and three. Also proposed parking sign, a waiver request letter for sixty-five High Street. On February twenty seventh, there's a sixty-five High Street light catalog cut, the sixty-five High Street park S parking two and an enlarged floor plan. On March twenty sixth, there was a poor document submitted, sixty-five High Street F and one L E D R D B C twelve dark sky website, light spec sheet and a millennium um L E B D R B C twelve dash S B L M seventy-nine report. March twenty eighth, sixty-five High Street eighty-one X two, eight sixty-four, eight six one four three B K and maximum lighting cloud canoid L E D black light outdoor wall light uh destination lighting. April tenth, sixty-five High S K eighty-six fourteen B K proposed light, light spec sheet proposed light two and three, proposed parking signs and a waiver request letter for sixty-five High Street dated four ten twenty-five. April twenty-third, um there are four, there are three different documents, all with the same number, one, four, six, two, three, eight, one, six, version two, then various. Uh one is back left, one is front right, and one is right. April thirtieth, updated waiver request letter for sixty-eight High Street. And on March twenty-seventh, Robits Window Cut Sheet and sixty-five High Street eight eighty-one X seven final site plans. We also received public comments from um a Mr. Dix McComas. He was in a conversation with staff. We've received um comments from Mr. Fred Hartwell, was an attachment of analysis of property, um the titling requests. We've also received um comments. I don't, I had them, I reviewed them earlier from a number, here it is, a number of of a number of um neighbors to the site. And that was on February or on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. So those are the public comments that I am aware of. Is there any other public comments or other submissions, Ms. Williams, that I needed to um recognize?
No, you're aware of all the public comments that I'm aware of, so we're on the same page.
Great. So who's represented? Oh, we had a site visit which I cannot attend, and I wonder, I know Mr. Slovater and Mr. Meadows were at the site visit. Um, Mr. White or Mr. Henry, have you, were you at the white, the site visitor, have you observed the property?
I wasn't able to attend either, Mr. Chair.
Yep. So Mr. Meadows and Mr. Slovater, can you give us a report on the site visit?
David.
Go ahead, Greg.
Yep.
Okay, um. We. We were at the slight visit, the site visit, excuse me, um with David Burson uh representing the owner and the owner uh and another person uh whose name I cannot remember. Um. And they showed us around the property and explained what was, what was going to happen. The gravel driveway would be um enlarged and brought somewhat closer to the house so that it would be within the four feet that was being called for. And uh there will be only parking on the um south side of the driveway and in the rear of the of the property. Um. They indicated that the only other major change that would occur would be uh first on the first floor on the south side of the property of the building um in which both the first floor and the second floor would be enclosed. The first floor of the porch to be enclosed would be uh made into a bedroom that would have an exit going out to some steps and also an exit into the building that would be different than what it is now. It would be on the east side of the porch. The enclosure for the second floor was primarily for inclement weather to prevent any degradation of the first floor area that was to be enclosed and to prevent any water damage that might be encompassed there. Uh there were no other changes that were noted except that the windows were going to be replaced. Uh and I believe that we got a diagram indicating what the specifications for the new windows were going to be in part. Um. Questions that were asked, uh. I know that I asked regarding the last time that this came up before us. Um. And I think Steve Judge and I were the only ones on the uh Z B A at that time. Um, and Jacinta has not been able to locate the plans that we were looking at at that time. So we're still missing um what I consider some very important information. Um. And other than that, David, were there any other items that I've missed?
Uh well, there were a couple of things that were represented to us. One is that there's a garage building in the back with three spaces, one of which the left most space is, we were told, is available for parking. The other two spaces were used by a previous owner for storage of certain things and are filled. I'm not sure wha- what impact that has on anything, but we can find that out. And the other thing we were told is that the current owner who purchased the property last October is residing in the building at this time. I'm not entirely certain if it's a primary residence or not, but he said that he maintains a residence in the building so that it is currently owner occupied. Now, that's everything else Craig was very complete with. I mean, Mr. Meadows.
Great, thank you. Um. This is the place for the applicant to uh present their um application to the board. Who's representing the applicant? Mr. Burson?
Yep.
Would you um please identify yourself for the record?
Of course. Uh David Burson here, uh an attorney from Legacy Counselors P C. Um here representing sixty-five High Street Rentals LLC.
Uh and Mr. Burson, what's your address? Just for the record again, we need it for the record.
Sure. Uh three fifty-eight Sewell Street, Ludlow, Massachusetts, zero one zero five six.
Great. And and while he's up on the um the screen, Mr. Robics, in case you wish to speak, can you identify yourself as as well, so we don't have to do it in the middle of a presentation?
That's no problem. My name is Alec Robits. I'm the owner of sixty-five High Street. And uh happy to be here. Thank you guys for making the time.
And you currently reside where?
My my licensed address is twelfth Ruth Ellen Road, Houston, Massachusetts. Um but I reside at sixty-five High Street almost ninety-five percent of the time when I'm not at my parents.
Alright. Okay, Mr. Burson, you may proceed.
Thank you. Additionally, just very quickly, also with us here today is Jeff Brooks from Solid State Construction, who's our general contractor um to answer any specific questions that you guys may have relative to the proposed changes to the the porches in the building. Um, so uh the property in question, sixty-five High Street, um is an approximately point four two acre property located within the uh general residence zoning district. Um there's currently a two-family uh structure on the property. It's approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet. Um it has two units, a three-bedroom unit on the first floor, and on the second and third floor, there's a four-bedroom unit. Um specifically, we're here today seeking permission uh from this board uh for a special permit under section three point three two one one of the Amherst zoning bylaws to formally make this a non-owner occupied duplex. Additionally, as part of this application, uh we are looking, as I mentioned earlier, um to make some site changes, um as uh Mr. Meadows so succinctly indicated, um some changes to the driveway, um as well as changes to the um front porch as well as the sorry, the first floor porch as well as the second floor porch porch on the unit. Um, the property itself has a somewhat unique situation uh with respect to its owner occupancy status. Um it was built in the eighteen seventies, um and it was converted into a multifamily duplex sometime in the nineteen sixties or seventies as far as um you know, inspection services could figure out. Um, and this at that time nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies is obviously prior to any sort of owner occupied occupancy requirements uh for duplexes in the town of Amherst. Uh there were a number of special permits uh that were issued on this property primarily in the the nineties, um mostly dealing with a potential uh third unit on the property to be located within that uh the garage structure that was mentioned earlier. Um in my understanding that none of those uh prior special permits ever included any sort of owner occupancy requirement. Um as it was indicated, um those requirements didn't obviously attach uh until two thousand and fourteen. Um, so uh Mr. Robits, um through his LLC purchases property in October of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, as this uh as was so clearly indicated um by this project application report. Um, the town bylaws have since changed, and they now require special permit uh upon any change of ownership. Um, and although there is, I guess, an argument to be made that the uh property itself is pre-existing non-conforming with respect to its non-owner occupied status. Um it's our belief, and I think uh inspection services would agree um that it's much cleaner and it makes a lot more sense for us to be seeking a special permit and bringing this property into conformity as a non-owner occupied duplex under section three point three two one one of the Amherst zoning bylaw. Um, and if possible, I'm going to try and share my screen just so I can show. Here we go. Okay, uh is everybody seeing that? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um so I've pulled up the uh the most recent site plan for the property. Um so specifically, uh the changes that we're proposing on this property. Um and let me know if you can see my pointer arrow. Um but right here, um this section of the driveway, uh the line, if you follow my arrow, is where the driveway currently exists, and this is a gravel driveway. Uh so what we're first proposing is to expand the existing gravel driveway closer to the the property itself, uh which is why we're seeking that modification under section uh seven point one zero three because we'd be coming closer than eight feet to the the structure itself. Um as part of um expanding that driveway space, uh we'd be looking to include three parking spots labeled five, four, and three on the site plan uh to be located with on the south side of the driveway, uh leaving adequate um space on the north side of the driveway uh for cars to pass um and leave the premises. Uh additionally, there would be two further parking spots uh labeled two and one at the rear of the property. Um as you can see here, located in front of the garage. Um additionally, as part of including those uh spots, five, four, and three, uh we are proposing to also include um signage just to indicate where those parking spots are located. As I'm sure this board is is well aware, unfortunately gravel does not take well to painting of lines. Uh so we think that monumentation here makes a lot of sense. Um and I do have the proposed monumentation. Oops. Sorry, the uh the banner at the top of this screen. Oh, there we go. Makes it a little hard to see. Now, here we go. Uh so this is the proposed monumentation to be included uh in front of those parking spaces. Uh additionally, uh we'd be seeking to add additional lighting on the property. Um all of that lighting that we're proposing would be dark sky compliant so that we wouldn't be any light bleed to impact the butters. Um specifically, we're looking to include a light on the front porch here where my pointer is indicated. Um and that light, oh geez, once again. Here we go. Uh it looks like this. Uh so this light would be located at the front porch. And additionally, that light would be located at the rear porch here uh at the stairwell that attack that um enters the second floor dwelling unit. So there is a stairwell on the north side of the building that goes up to the second floor. Um so we would be proposing to include another matching light, dark sky compliant light at the bottom of the steps here. Uh finally, we're looking to also include another light uh above the garage here. Um that would also be dark sky compliant to add illumination for the parking area uh in that light. Oh, man. I have to wait for the uh the banner at the top of my share screen to to move. Would look like this. So this is the proposed garage light. So ultimately, what we're looking to do as part of this application um is we are looking to encapsulate the existing porches located uh on the property. So where my pointer is right now, this is the porch on the first floor of the property. Um there's a set of stairs that come off of that porch here. Um and as indicated, those stairs on the south of the property would be removed. Uh and then there would be another set of stairs added uh to the east of the property uh where there would be a new door located. Um. And what I'm going to do is, uh and just for uh for clarification, the front porch or the the first floor porch uh is approximately uh a a hundred and forty square feet. Uh so we'd be enclosing a hundred and forty square feet on the first floor. Um and then the second floor porch, um the house or the dwelling bumps out a little bit. Um so that would be closer to about seventy-five square feet on the second floor. Um and what I'd like to do next um is show you what the proposed building will look like. Um so these are the elevations that we've had prepared for the property. And this is if you are going to be looking at um essentially standing at the south of the property, looking towards the back of the house. Um so this section here where there is a door and stairwell coming down, um this is where the existing um open porch is located on the property. Uh and then right above that, as indicated, um is the second floor porch porch. Um so the idea here is to.
Yes, person, I I I don't always see at the site plans right now. We're just.
Oh, geez.
Did you try to, are you trying to get a different?
I I am, yes. You know what? I didn't realize I had to change it. Here we go. Is that better? Can you guys see it?
Yes. Now we can see the red, it's a rendering.
Yes, thank you for letting me. This is a uh an elevation uh rendering, just showing what the proposed change would look like. Um you can see where our plan is to match the existing siding on the property. Um you know, this this will not be a funky color. This is meant to look consistent with the building as it currently looks. Um so that siding will, of course, go from the bottom all the way up to the second floor. Uh additionally, the only purpose really behind encapsulating that second floor was, as was previously stated, um was essentially to protect this first floor um bedroom that we're proposing here. Um there's currently some weather damage that both porches are showing. Um so they do already need some T L C. Um and by encapsulating that second floor, we hope to preserve um the integrity of the of the entire structure. Um and I have some additional views, um same thing, but just so you can see it from different angles. Um so this would be seeing it from the front of the house, looking at the proposed porch area. And please let me know if this is not showing up.
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, so this is showing the uh the properties, if we're standing towards the um I guess, the the western part of the southwestern corner of this lot and looking at the porch uh conversion here. And then one final visual of that head on. And this is what it would look like if you were just standing at the south of the property line, looking at it straight on. Um, so um per section three point three uh two one one, um the applicant uh will as what we're proposing, the applicant would be the primary manager of this property. Um he has had experience managing other rental units in the past and would be the primary point of contact for any issues onsite. Um per the bylaw, he is proposing to um have one of his tenants uh tenants be designated as an onsite manager um to oversee the other tenants on the property. Um however, um he would um essentially be the first point of contact both for the town as well as the butters and neighbors in the property. Um as he has indicated, um Alec has uh has resided here uh off and on, although it it's debatable whether it's a primary residence for him or not. Um he does enjoy this neighborhood, and he enjoys the town of Amherst. Um and much like some of the concerns from the butters, um he has no interest in this problem, this house becoming a nuisance house or a problem for his tenants. Uh to that end, he he certainly understands the concerns that have been raised here. Um and he's more than happy to provide his contact information uh to all of the neighbors and butters, because quite frankly, he would much like uh much rather be notified if there were an issue um than to be finding out from zoning enforcement. Um, that being said, the property itself or what we're proposing for the property uh is to limit the parking so that each unit would have uh two parking spaces, both the first floor unit and the second floor unit, and that would be least restricted. Uh so there would only be allowed to have two cars per unit. Uh the tenants would certainly have to figure that out for themselves. Uh but that being said, we'd also have one additional spot reserved for visitor or guest parking. Um, we think that that makes sense. Uh this is, this property itself is very close uh to the P V T A to a bus stop and would be very easily accessible for uh people to commute to and from school if that's where they're going. Um. Additionally, um the um the future leases uh for this property, and and this is not included in the lease that was provided as a sample, uh because there uh there are tenants in that, I believe, the first floor unit currently. Um but for future leases, um as I've explained to my client, um there are some Amherst general bylaws relative to nuisance houses and noise violations. Uh so any future leases will, of course, include language specifically making it clear um that if there were any complaints, whether that be from a butters or the town itself, um that would be grounds for uh immediate termination uh of the lease for any problem tenants. Um, there's often a a desire for there to be professional management companies involved with these properties. Um but unlike many of those professional management companies where, quite frankly, the tenants are are mostly just uh exchangeable, interchangeable, and just another number, uh Mr. Robits has a vested interest in making sure that he is renting this unit out to good tenants. Um problem tenants are problems not just for the neighbors, but also for Mr. Robits himself. Um. Additionally, um as part of the uh the management plan, um as Mr. Robits is um Additionally, um as part of the uh the management plan, um as Mister Rovitz is um not based in Amherst directly. He does have um two points of contact, um I believe Mister Time Ableman, and correct me if I'm mispronouncing that name, Alec. Um as well as um Brian Goslaw, uh who are local, he has points of contact for local individuals. In the event he is not available to make it to the premises for an emergency, um there are people nearby who are able to do that for him. Um that being said, um I will turn this over to um. To the board, if they have any specific questions uh about the management or about the proposed construction of the property itself. And uh thank you very much for for having us and for the time.
Thank you, Mister Burson, I've got a couple of questions and I'll open it up to members of the board, um the first question is. Talk to me about the garage in the back. I could, when I drove past it today, I I didn't, I didn't go on to the property because I I hadn't given notice. But the garage looks like it could hold three. Three parking spaces, easy. Uh can you tell me what's the disposition of the garage and why we aren't thinking about using the garage for parking rather than um. Getting a waiver for the three parking spaces along the driveway.
Steve, I I could give you some color there, um so when I had purchased the property, the the prior owner had used that. Uh the two garage spaces to the right of the the main um bay, so to speak, as storage. And they left a ton of stuff there, and it appears that there's a partitioning wall. That they use to to hang gardening tools and and bikes and stuff like that. Um and I believe that that side of the garage, from a structural standpoint. I would like to have someone come look at it, just to make sure that it's structurally sound and could support two cars. You know, I don't want uh dwelling collapsing on the vehicles, um but also I believe that partitioning wall would have to be removed. To to comfortably fit two cars in those two bays, um and until I do those two things, I would like the restriction. Um just so I I don't have any issues moving forward till I know the the garage is safe and structurally sound.
And there's there's three bays there, so one bay you think is already usable, is that right? There's three, there's, to me like there's three bays in the garage.
Ye- yes, that's correct, the bay on the the left is certainly usable, I I would intend to park my vehicle there. Um but I I wouldn't want tenant access to that bay.
Okay. And then the next question I have is, in the past, in the nineties, there was a special permit granted several times. For residents above the garage, so there would be, in effect, three dwelling units on this property. From my reading of the past. Special permits from the nineties, it looks to me like that work was never done. Because uh well, well, I I at least it wasn't. In two applications expired without the work being done, there was a third special permit granted. And then I have seen nothing else that tells me what the disposition was of that special permit. So is there livable space above the garage now, is it being used as livable space? Or is that um has that been voided for lack of uh completion of the project of the special permit?
Yeah, so I I can speak to that, um so it's not, it's not livable at this time. Uh my understanding is that the prior owner, um I think the last application was in nineteen ninety-four relative to the. Um the the garage unit, um I don't believe any work was done relative to that permit.
And is your, is it your understanding that that special permit? For that uh garage expired because the work was not done within two years?
That's, that's my understanding, um.
And so you're not seeking to use that special permit or any other mi- any other means. To provide, to request a residential unit above the garage.
Um not at this time, if there was any intent to put an ADU there, it would have to be an additional application. Um and I believe, uh my understanding is that the um town of Amherst is in the process of of. Shaking up their ADU laws relative to the um the statewide changes that have taken effect. Um so at this time, there's, we're not proposing an application right now relative to an ADU.
Just to be clear, then, it's your understanding in your presentation that the special permit that we have before us now. Does not, if granted, would not authorize a dwelling unit in the gar- uh in or above the garage without further action by either the. Um town council, the ZDA, the planning board, or some other municipal ac- uh agency, is that right?
Uh that's my understanding, correct.
Okay, and you're not, and you're not requesting one?
Not at this time, I don't, I I don't know what the future holds, um but we're certainly not.
You couldn't do it without additional action on the part of the town of Amherst or its or its subdivisions to allow that, right?
That, that's correct.
Got it, okay, that's what I'm looking for. All right, um. I'm ju- just looking through my notes. So, in the past, can you tell us? How, if the um, what's the? Practice of the owner occupancy of the unit of of the this property? Has it been owner occupied, um despite the um? What the, the fact that it wasn't required under the special permits that were granted, has it been owner occupied? It since nineteen ninety, or can you tell us what the history of the owner occupancy status? Of this dwelling unit of this site has been over the last ten years?
Uh I can't say with specificity, um whether or not previous owners specifically occupied this uh this property. Um so unfortunately, I I can't address that specific question. Uh my understanding is that some of the prior owners did occupy part of the uh the duplex, I'm not sure that all of them did.
And I just ask the question for Miss Williams or Mister Waschevitz, do we have any indication from town? Um town records as to the owner occupancy status, or the whether there was an owner occupant in this property of. In pr- in prior times.
It's a little bit spotty, go ahead, Dave.
No, I was gonna say, the only record that we do have is there was a uh site plan approval, which for a brief period of time was how. Uh duplexes were created in the RG district. Um and it does mention it as being owner occupied, but that is. Nothing else is conclusive through through its history, unless somebody actually knows the people that lived there.
And so we had owner, we had a site plan. Uh review that stated it was owner occupancy sometime in the two thousand ten to two thousand twenty in that. Timeframe, the early two thousand ten, something like that, and then is there any, was there rental um rental re- Rental permits granted or anything else like that, that would that would give us an indication as to the uh stat owner occupancy stats of the of the tenants? So had they, eh eh, did they have, did they have the uh rental resi- rental permits?
They would have started rental permits in two thousand twelve, if that's how it was being um used. Uh I would have to go back and look at each one of those, to, you're renting one unit or two at the time.
Yeah, so that'd be the only way, if they did apply for a rental permit, that's the only. The GIS and other things don't give us that information, the pro- the special permits don't specify that, and so the rental. The rental permit or residential rental permit is the only way to know what the history is, uh if they did indeed apply for a rental permit.
Yeah, for for the last thirteen years or so, we could look at that, sure.
That's good enough time, okay. Those are the, my first set of questions, I want to open it up to other members of the board to ask questions and not dominate the time. If I may go, Mr. Chair.
Sure, Mister Henry.
Um either for attorney Burson or Mister Rovitz, um what is the makeup of the neighborhood? In terms of non-owner occupied or not occupied?
So, oh.
Sorry, David, you could provide color, then I could.
Uh I, there's only so much uh color that I can provide in this, in this context of this question. Um so I did do a little bit of research, although um my research was really primarily limited to viewing. Which of the surrounding properties are single family versus two family? Uh without digging deeply into the individual permitting history of each property. Um it, it's essentially very difficult to figure out. Um so that being said, um just on High Street and not including South Whitney Street, which I think actually has more. Uh multifamily and two-family units than High Street does, um I counted approximately twenty-nine um residences. On High Street, um of those twenty-nine residences, uh seventeen of them are two-family, three-family or apartment buildings. Uh so more than half um of the units or the properties in in the surrounding area, or on that street at least. Um are two multifamily uh dwelling units.
Ju- just to echo your statements, David, um I'm a little directionally challenged with the site plan that we're looking at on David's screen. So forgive me if uh my directions aren't correct here, but immediately in front of my dwelling. There are one, two, there are approximately four or five um non-owner occupied student rentals. My neighbors immediately to the right, if you're looking at um the site plan on David's screen, right now, there's two, two houses. Houses, two single-family houses on that lot, one of which is fully rented. Um I I'm not sure how many occupants reside in there, um and then the house to the immediate left is also, I believe, owner occupied. As it is also a duplex, um so I I would say a combination of both, but probably about seventy-five percent. Non-owner occupied student rentals.
Thank you, so going back to um one of Chair Judge's early questions with that new laws with ADU. It would not require you to come before this board for a special permit to build one of those dwellings. How would you handle or and manage parking if you decide to build one of those buildings on the property?
If if I, if I might, Alec, just very briefly before before you answer, um so my understanding. At least currently, um is that the only, and and this is without any changes to the the Amherst bylaws. Which I think are potentially being proposed right now, uh but my understanding under the new ADU laws at the state level, um that. In order to put an ADU on a lot that already has a two-family would require a special permit of some sort. Um so it would be subject to this board, um you know, unlike the, if this were a single-family home, for instance. You might be able to put an ADU on uh via site plan review or some other, you know, uh process that's not as as stringent. Um but my understanding is that in a situation like this where there is a two-family, at the very least, you'd be requiring a special permit. Uh and I believe that as part of the statewide law, um that um. Depending upon its location, you may not be required to have any parking spaces, um that being said. Um as I mentioned, at this time at least, uh we're not proposing an ADU in the in the property. Um if we were proposing an ADU, we would certainly have to figure out um some form of additional parking.
So, I I I think you're trying to solve a park-in, but one of the things that was highlighted a few moments ago is that. You have a parking structure, but according to Mister Rovitz, and forgive me for saying your name incorrectly. There may be some structural issues. Why haven't you looked into those structural issues to say, okay, maybe this is what we need to do? And this may potentially fix the parking problem, and then if that doesn't work, come before this board to say. Okay, we've tried this, this doesn't work, and here is why we're here.
Um I I simply think it was not a function of order of operations, but merely financial resources. Um um I hope to just present to the neighbors and the board just some color on myself and ju- just introduce myself more formally. Um as this hearing continues, um but simply foot, simply put, my my work situation is rather fluid. I work remotely from Amherst ninety-five percent of the time. Um I am notified approximately three to five months in advance of any scheduled, um. I would say short to medium duration stints that would require travel and for me to rent another dwelling um on a on a work site. Um and that being said, um my primary concern is, should I have any scheduled travel? Um for me to financially be able to maintain the property and keep it as somewhere where I could reside. Um I I just learned of the owner occupancy restriction when I purchased the house. That I would need the mobility to be able to legally rent an additional bedroom to financially support myself and not pay two rents. Um so I think it was merely a function of me just being concerned with keeping my head above water as opposed to. Um thinking through a methodical process uh in terms of the garage getting fixed and then figuring out the rest.
Um and as as far as, I mean, just to address the the more immediate question regarding parking. Um you know, as as mentioned, you know, the garage could potentially be a uh much bigger financial um hurdle uh than what we're proposing. Um and the changes to the parking area were um one hundred percent, you know, as far as the location of these these spots and the widening of the driveway. Uh were one hundred and, you know, hundred percent a product of um this permitting process, so it was brought to our attention. Um as upon submitting this application that, um you know, we'd have to effectively correct for. Um the width of the driveway, because as it currently stands, um there wasn't sufficient width to width to fit cars on the driveway. Um and even if we did have a functioning garage, um it wouldn't even have enough spots in that garage. Um for the number of units that are already located on on the premises per the town's bylaws.
And my my final question before, um so the other members can ask, um. Have you had noise complaints and have you dealt with those since you've been there?
Sure, I could give you some color, so when I purchased the property, I inherited approximately three tenants. Um only one of which remains, all of the tenants were graduate students, um and and a theme that I intend to. Keep on the property, as I I think the graduate students are obviously more mature, respectful, and more academically focused than. A nineteen-year-old per se, um the graduate students that I've had. They are out of the house by eight AM and they arrive, you know, depending on if they're a research student. Um approximately between seven and eight thirty PM at night. Um there have, there haven't been any noise complaints to to my knowledge, um and if there were, um they have not been brought to my attention.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mister Slaveter.
Okay, um I have a number of questions in different areas, uh the first easy one. Was the previous owner from whom you bought the property living there, living onsite?
Um I am not sure of his status as an owner occupant, um. The process of my purchase was effectuated through a broker. Um and they did maintain some pretty strict anonymity, so as there was no bias in the process and. You know, the process could be smooth, so I am unsure as to what his resident status was.
Oh, you, so you don't know if he was actually living there, okay.
That when I, I could give you some color, when I um moved into the property. I believe a property manager or someone from um the seller's camp, per se. Was moving furniture out of the house, um so potentially. Uh I'm not sure whom that person was, but I believe there is a possibility, I believe the house was in conformity to the owner occupancy requirement.
Miss Mister Slaveter, maybe I can give you a little bit of color, uh or not, or some information on that, there was a um. Application in two thousand twenty, I don't, what was it, Mister Meadows, two thousand twenty-one or something? For Miss Faye, yeah, Miss Faye Crosby wanted to um sell the property. She was there as a, she was living in California part-time, but she maintained a residency in Amherst. Um and she claimed that as her principal residency. I don't know how often she was there, she was back and forth, um but there was, but she felt that she was the owner occupant. And she rented out the other spaces in the building, if that's my recollection of the application that took, that was before us back. Forty-five years ago, I, does that comport with your recollection, Mister Meadows?
Basically, yes, that that she was, she had a buyer. And wanted to get it declared a uh non-owner occupied. Um and uh. One of the major problems that that she had, there were some Mount Holyoke students that were living there. But it was very hard to distinguish one apartment from the other.
Yeah.
Some of the students were living downstairs and upstairs, there was no real distinction and no real separation of the apartments. Which is why I brought it up to begin with, we don't have any plans now that indicate. We don't have any plans now that indicate what the condition of the apartments are is. We haven't, we didn't go in them this during the site visit. And I believe that we were about to turn every, turn the uh request down before.
Um, from Miss Crosby, yes.
Yes. And so whether she was living there or not, I it it, I think she did indicate that she was, but there were too many people there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Slobodar, I hope that was helpful.
That, that is helpful. It's actually consistent with something that I read. I read a lot about this property. I I'm a little, I'm not certain where I read it, but I I'm pretty sure that I read that it up up until the change in ownership that it was owner occupied. So that would, whether it really was or maintained as being owner occupied, I don't know. Um, I have a couple of questions about what you just said about the the garage. You 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 mentioned that the two bays on the right were used by the previous owner who may or may not have lived there for storage of a lot of stuff. Is it, is all that stuff still in those two bays? You, you, you have not emptied them?
Y- yes, I plan on renting a uh like a fifteen yard container. I I, that's my summer project to get the, they left scaffolding and a bunch of just equipment and I just have to get it all out.
Right, so then you mentioned that it, that you then would assess to see if those two bays would support cars being parked in there. Or I think you mentioned you don't want to put the uh put a strain on the building that it might collapse or something. Does that mean that those parking spaces are not on grade? Is there a space? Is there a basement? Are are those part, are the floors of those the ground? Or are they elevated?
No, that's correct. It's just a cement slab. Um.
So, so if you empty, if you empty it, presumably, once you get all of that stuff out of there, cars, the floor would support the weight of cars.
So I I don't know that I'm the best equipped to answer this question, though I do know we have Jeff Brooks on the call today. I'm not sure if Jacinta could admit Jeff from the audience to the panel. Um, but I believe Jeff could provide color on that question, David.
Ms. Williams, will you um bring in Mr. Brooks? And Mr. Brooks, we need your, we need your name and address for the record.
Hey, hey, guys, I'm Gals. How how are we? Um, I uh, yeah, so I I have been in that garage.
Oh, Mr. Brooks, we just need you, please start with your name and address for the record and then.
Oh, jeez, yep, sorry. Uh, so I'm Jeff Brooks with Solid State Construction. Our office is at Two Shaker Road in Shirley, Massachusetts.
Okay, proceed.
Yep, the uh, so I I've been in that garage structure, structure. It's a very um to today's building unconventional structure in that it's not not really a um sort of, it's not really framed the way that you would frame a structure today. So there is this um some large center beams that are in a a uh wall under that in that cuts across those two parking spaces that make it fairly awkward to um, to uh to, you wouldn't be able to really park there now. Um, and then to remove that that wall and structure, we would need a engineer to take a look at it and say, okay, well, if we're gonna open that up, what would it, what would need to be done to support the structure? So as as um, as Alec was saying, so the the roof doesn't kind of come falling down on top of the top of the cars or whatever is in in the structure.
Okay. All right, yeah, we did not go into there, so I'm I'm trying to envision what you're describing with a wall crossing the parking spaces, but we didn't see that. Okay. Um. Okay, so emptying the garage and assessing it is in your plans before you're a whole lot older, right?
A- as soon as I uh have the means to perhaps renovate the garage, I I think it is in the future.
Okay. Um, you mentioned that nobody wants problem tenants or that you you would be careful about um, who you would rent the spaces to. How, how would you go about renting your units? Would you rent it by the unit to a group of people who pre-select or would you be renting it by the bedroom? Or how, what are your plans for this?
Um, I I think my plans are probably per bedroom for the unit. I- if I am occupying the residence at a specific time, the unit that I'm occupying, which would be the first unit. I would run on a per bedroom basis. Um, and then the additional unit that I am not occupying, I would either rent on an individual basis or to a group. Um, I, just as a prefatory comment, um, just because I live there. Um, ninety-five percent of the time, I would never allow anyone into my space. That would make it un-disruptive or unlivable for me. And certainly not my neighbors. Um, so in terms of searching for tenants. Um, as I mentioned before, I would like to stay primarily in the grad student age range. Um, specifically because um I'm a little bit older myself than undergraduate students. And I think I would just want to make it a very cohesive and respectful professional living environment.
I can certainly understand that. I've, I've seen the car, the nineteen year olds walking on my street. Not a problem. Um. You mentioned earlier about possibly, or I think maybe Mr. Burson mentioned, a site manager. If you were approved to not to be owner occupied.
Sure, I could.
What do you have a site man, what what is a site manager to you?
Sure, so when I um purchased the property in October, one of or two of the three tenants, one lived on the unit that I reside in and two lived in the second unit. These were the leases that I assumed upon purchasing the property. One of the um onsite residents was, um, I believe he's twenty-nine years old. Um, he was an international student uh conducting research at UMass. And for the two students that were on the property, they were several several years younger, uh closer in in age to myself. Um, and he he almost acted as like a father figure, you know, the smoke detector goes off. You know, they come to him if I'm not present, um, and just generally being a secondary resource that I would, I would be if I was present for any such happenings that needed my attention. Um, so in terms of uh an onsite property manager, probably someone who is the most mature, the most attentive and the most knowledgeable when it comes to maintaining, managing a home. And um someone who acts as the glue guy for the residents who everyone could come to, there's a problem.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Meadows.
Um, going back to the problems that we saw the last time that there was a request for this building. Has, do you know if there have been any? I don't want to use the word structural, but but changes in the layout of the building as to how the tenants would be um located and how how they would be. You've got theoretically two separate apartments.
Yeah, so I I.
The way it was laid out before, there were not two separate apartments.
Okay, so I I could give you color as to what I witnessed from myself residing in the property. So there are two ingresses and two egresses, um, one for each respective unit. Um, and the residents who maintain residency on the second unit, which is the second and third floor of the dwelling. They primarily, David, if you could just take your cursor and show the members here on the map. They maintain the side stairwell entrance as their secondary um entrance or or egress to the building. And they primarily use the front door. The front door, when you walk into the dwelling, there's a little, I guess what you could call an open vestibule type concept with a door that restricts access to the first unit, and it always remains shut. And so that first unit, they primarily access the first unit through a door located at the bottom of the stairwell in the driveway. And the secondary ingress or egress is the change of the steps um where the current porch is. And so to my knowledge and what I have seen, there's always been a mutual exclusiveness between the two apartments. I I have never once seen a tenant come from the second unit onto the first unit. People, you know, are very friendly and socialized, but it's never been a fluid entire three-story house.
And uh, I mean, just to to go off this point, um, not only are they maintaining uh separate ingresses and egresses for those uh individual units. Um, but I mean, and and Mr. Woskevitz can concernly, you know, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is that if there was insufficient separation, that that may be a uh an issue for inspection services when it came time to do issue rental permits on these on these properties. Um, once again, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Woskevitz.
Yeah, um, I haven't been in it for a few years, so I currently don't know what the arrangement is. Uh, not two, a couple of years ago, there was some water damage that occurred and that first floor unit was um fixed, and I think some of that was addressed at that time.
Yeah, David, so the first floor, there was water damage, um, and they did rehab the entire first unit. During that rehab, David, if you could just zoom in for me, they did include the addition of this open concept vestibule area where the first, where where the primary staircase leading to the second floor is. So right next to this bedroom, nearest the entrance, there is a doorway that remains consistently shut nearest the living room. And so there isn't, there isn't uh fluidity between the tenants coming up and down from the second floor to the first floor.
Yeah, so at the time of the water damage, that's, we had made note of some of these things, and I believe this was corrected at that time. I I cannot say that it did, because I did not witness it, but that was the intent.
So just to clarify, the biggest separation is um, when you, when you go through the main door, there is a staircase and are you saying that that staircase leads up to one apartment and the door below the staircase leads to the second unit?
Um, it it doesn't lead to the second unit, so that door actually does not have a door handle. It remains consistently shut. Um, the primary.
Uh, how does a, how does the first floor get into it?
I'm sorry, so.
They can't get into it from the front door? You can't get into the four apartments through the front door?
They they can with a key, but their primary ingress is where David's cursor is. And their secondary ingress or egress is where the open porch currently exists. Which were.
But that's gonna be a bedroom. It's gonna have direct out, uh, direct access to the outside, and you're not proposing that the secondary egress would be through that bedroom and then into the main house, are you?
Um, it, that potentially would be a bedroom that I would, I myself would move into. Um. Um, the primary ingress, though, is is where David's cursor is. It it is on the side of the dwelling.
And and is that the covered staircase on the side of the house? Like, there's the staircase that goes all the way up to the second floor, that is the, that is the ingress that you're talking about?
That's uh, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So just to be sure.
Where's the entrance on the second floor? I I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Henry and and Mr. Me- Meadows, but I'm looking at, so you have the front door, I see that. Where is the entrance from the stairway on the second floor? Are you looking at the floor now?
This, here we go, this is the second floor, yeah.
So right where this pantry, right where this pantry is located, is.
I see that. Where's the second, where's the stairs?
Oh, the stairs are, David, if you want to move to the front of the image.
So there's two sets of stairs.
That's the stairs, yeah, I understand. That's the stairs for the front door. Where is the stairs on the side of the house that you say is a primary egress in and out of that they will use? But where is it on the floor plan? Where is it on the floor plan?
Uh, I don't think the exterior plan, the exterior stairs are are shown on the floor plan.
Uh, is there a door on the, is there a door on the floor plan that shows me where that where those stairs would drop some, where where somebody would enter from the stairs on the side?
Is it for the second or or first floor?
Second floor.
Yeah, so. Let me pull it up.
If I can just ask Mr. Judge's question a different way. When you, when you go up the second floor to get into the unit, do you enter into a bedroom, the kitchen, and living room?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That's a better way of asking. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
No worries. On the second unit, when you enter, when you walk up those stairs, you enter into almost like a I, I I'm putting like a locker stall there, like a mudroom type area, um, nearest a kitchen. Um, and then there's the living room.
Can we see the floor plans?
Yeah, I I apologize. It's just the uh, the banner keeps dropping down and covering my uh.
So you, do you enter into the thing that's called the pantry?
Yes, you do. It it's not you, it's just uh, it's kind of dead space, but I'm turning it into like a mudroom so I could hang coats and hooks and
probably should not be labeled pantry.
Yeah.
Uh, so Mr. Meadows, I think I interrupted you. I'm sorry. Did you have more questions?
Well, basically, we're going over the questions that I had because I I just find it to be a little confusing.
So does anyone ever enter the you, the rental unit that is comprised of the second and third floor? Do they ever enter from the front of the house up the stairs that are labeled stairs upstairs down?
Um, eh. I think it's really just tenant preference. Um, I I make it very, or when I purchased the property, I made it very distinctly clear the correct uh and appropriate way for each tenant, depending on where they resided, to enter and exit the property. Um, but if a tenant so desired, if they were carrying something or moving something, I certainly wouldn't restrict their ability to enter one way or another.
On on a, on a regular day, going to class, coming back from the store, whatever. How, which stairs does a tenant on the second floor?
The driveway.
Stairs do they use?
The driveway. A lot of the.
The driveway stairs, the 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 stairs that are attached to the side of the house with that corrugated plastic roof on it.
Where's the secondary means of egress?
So the, the primary, right, right where David's cursor is, it it is the front door. Most of, most.
That's the second floor and it has, they have to go downstairs, right?
That's.
To a door that doesn't have a a doorknob on it.
No, 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 no. So where, David, if you'd like to go to the first floor rendering, so it it's completely open, so they don't access a door. There is a door that separates that stairwell from the first unit. So as the the residents in the first unit cannot access the second unit. But there is by no means a restriction from any tenant who's entering the dwelling through the front door who resides in the second unit from like not accessing the stairwell or direct means to the second floor through a door. The door is simply there to prevent the flow of tenants from the first unit to the second unit.
Yeah, Alec, it it might be helpful. On this plan, where is the door in question?
Yeah.
Where is the door you're talking about?
Um, so I should have verbalized this. Um, the living room, David, right there on your left-hand side. Do you see that entryway right there? Not that door, but this, yep, this is the door that remains consistently shut.
And who has a key to that door?
Um, I have a key to that door. I I haven't provided any tenants with a key to that door. Um, just so as to prevent the constant uh and entering and exiting of the the first unit, not that there has ever been an issue, um, but I.
So then that that door is not a second egress for the first floor.
No, the.
People with the first floor can't open it.
Well, they can. I I don't keep it locked. They they can. I just hold the key.
But what does that mean? You mean, is there, is there a latch on the, in the dining, in the living room? Is there a latch that can open the door and walk out to the foyer?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, you don't have to unlock it with a key, you just, it's always available to them?
It could, it's always available to the residents of the first unit, correct.
Mister Waskevich, okay, go ahead, Mister Slobodar, I'm sorry.
So if that door where the cursor is. Has a lock, but you have the key and it's never locked.
So the lock is only to get into the first unit. Now, the residents of the first unit can open that door.
To get out.
Correct.
So it could be a second exit in the case of an emergency. They can, they can open it to get out. They could also, I presume, open it to them have access to the stairs to the second floor.
Uh, that is correct, I I haven't had that issue and that hasn't been my experience living in the dwelling. Um, but yes, you are correct.
Okay.
And there's not a locked door to the second floor?
Um, th- there are pocket doors with a a lock, um, like a. I I don't know the correct verbiage for it, um, but um, for all intents and purposes, uh, not exactly, no. Um, that that door that we just discussed. Uh, is the primary point of separation between the first unit and the second unit. Where the second unit residents can't go into the first unit, but the first unit residents could use that as a. In in egress, if they need to.
But the first unit residents could walk up the stairs and the pocket doors are not an effective way of. Cordoning off the second floor from the first, from the first floor, is that what you're saying? You don't need a key to get into the second floor?
I'm sorry, can you just repeat your question one more time?
Can a first-floor resident walk up the stairs and open the door to get into the second floor? Or does they need, or do you have a full security door like you do on the um, first floor so that. There's um, safety and separation between the first and second floor? Can the first-floor tenant walk up the steps and walk into the second floor?
Uh, they.
Front door.
They, they, well, I give them separate sets of keys. Um, and so.
I I can, so it's a keyed door?
It is a key door, yes.
On the second floor? The top of the stairs. Top of the stairs on the second floor, is that a keyed door?
I apologize, no, that is not a key.
So arguably, somebody off the street could walk in that front door, walk up those stairs. And get into the second floor, but you couldn't do that under the first floor, am I misunderstanding something?
Um. I I don't know that I entirely agree with that point, but I, yes, someone could. Get to the second unit if they had a key to the front of the house. The door remained.
House is a keyed door.
All all of the doors are keyed for the two, two ingress and egresses for each unit. And they all remain consistently locked to the exterior.
Except for at the top of the stairs from the main door, because I believe you said that if someone were to go to the top of the stairs, it's a pocket door that is not really secured by a lock.
That is correct, that is correct. I, my, my experience in the house with the individual renters and non-group tenants per se. That a lot of them just maintain a complete separateness in living space from one another. And I I've never encountered a situation where. Um, I guess tenants were fraternizing with each other, so to speak, everyone just kind of remains very to themselves and. Goes about their business, as grad students would.
Mister Slobodar, have you fini- finished your questions?
I wasn't, I actually interrupted. Um, somebody else, because that door arrangement didn't make sense to me, I think I interrupted Mister Meadows.
Well, the.
But it was an accident, Craig, it was an.
I'm sure it was, I'm sure it was.
So unless Mister Meadows has some more questions, I, which we would let him pursue. We have both Mister Waskevich and Mister White who had their hands up.
But I have one more question.
I propose that Mister Meadows finish, and then we do the two others, and then we'll take our break.
And and that involves the third floor. Which, if I recall from the last time this was presented to us. There were some students who ended up living up there. Is is, am I correct in that? Mister Chair.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I remember.
And that was a difficulty that we found in addition to the egress and. Uh. From each of the apartments and how they were, to some degree, commingled.
Sure.
So that, so that, you know, calling it two separate apartments became difficult. So is there a? Um. An access to the third floor that's still available?
Greg, before I answer your question, can you just provide some clarity with the? Um, I guess, non-mutual exclusivity between the third floor and the second floor, it's my understanding that. The second unit is comprised of both the second and third floor. And it's treated as one unit as opposed to units two and three, three being the third floor. So I'm just a little confused with the basis of the question.
I think that the base, that that what we saw. The last time this came before us was that there were students living up on the third floor.
Right.
I believe they were Montholly Oak students, who, uh. Were up on the third floor, which became. Um. I wouldn't say an additional apartment, but it but certainly. Hard to distinguish between the the spaces on the second floor. And consequently, there's no, there is, as far as I can recall, there was no separate egress from there. Maybe Mister Ruske was, might have some information on that also.
David, if you might opine here, I'm not so certain that a separate. Yeah, egress is necessary as the third and second floor were considered part of the second unit.
So before Mister Waskevich's answer, let me follow up on Mister Meadows's question. Um, is the third floor livable space?
It it is finished space, that's correct.
And what's on the third floor?
Uh, it's currently as it's depicted in the floor plans in front of you, bedroom.
Bedroom, bedrooms, kitchen, or is it just bedrooms?
It it's, it's just a bathroom, just almost like a in-office type space, which is denoted as the living room and two bedrooms.
I'm sorry, do you say two bedrooms, living room and a bathroom?
Um, eh, the living room, eh, I think is improperly labeled, it's more of just kind of open office space, if you will. Um, I currently have a desk up there, but uh, it's just the bedroom and the bathroom, there there is no. Uh, actual room for a kitchen or to make it a unit, like a separate unit from the second unit.
And and your current tenant that you have. The the third and the second floor, you count them as one unit?
That's correct, that that was my understanding of how it was designated. As a duplex upon purchase, is that the second and third floor were considered one unit?
Okay. And you have two bedrooms on the second floor and two bedrooms on the third floor?
That's correct.
And a living room on the first floor and a living room on the second floor. And one of the things I remember is that we were concerned. And maybe this has been, and I don't remember the disposition of it, but we were concerned that the living room area, the area identified as living room. Could have been shut off to be another bedroom. Yeah, I think that was one of the concerns that we had. A few years ago, so that's an open space, there's no door there that that keeps the living room.
Um.
Closed off, is this an accurate representation of the existing floor plan?
This, as it currently sits, is an accurate representation, before renting to to any more graduate students. Um, I intended to perhaps come before this board again, um, I I would like to. Make that almost like a defined office space and like an actual usable space for like work purposes. Um, one for myself, uh, potentially, depending on where I uh, choose to live within the residence and potentially that of students as well.
Okay, but just to be clear, right now, there's no door separating a living room from the rest of the third floor space.
That's correct. Oh, wow, that was so old.
Okay. Um, Mister White.
Uh, this question is more for, uh, let me put my hand down while I'm talking, sorry, uh, for Miss Williams and Chair Judge. So when reviewing all the documents for this, um, I reminded myself and then completely forgot, I can't seem to find a management plan. Um, do we know right off the top of our head where that's located?
It's there, it's buried, um, let me just, it's page like forty-something in the. Hold on, let's just get you there, instead of me guessing. So I just passed it, one moment, page forty-seven. In the document titled. ZBA FY twenty-twenty-five dash nineteen. Um, original application submission, so it's page forty-seven.
Um, in full disclosure, not not to cut it, not to cut you off, Mister White. Um, we will need to update that management plan specifically to address the parking, because the management plan had not been updated. Um, prior to the initial submission, so just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, this, this, I apologize, also, the parking signs had not been listed on the the management plan, um, but obviously, there will be proposed parking signs.
Mister Waskevich, or Mister White, with any more questions? Okay.
Uh, you're ready for me?
Yep.
Okay, uh, yeah, going back to the uh, front door discussion and egress, so the lower unit, if that. Bedroom goes in the porch area and that was considered a second egress. Then there will need to be a second egress through the, probably through the front door, makes the most sense. Um, so that door that is currently locked by a key that does not have a knob or a handle, I understood to be the case. Uh, that would have to get fixed. Um, but with that said. If the plans are accurate and true in scale, it's potential that a small wall could be built. That would close off the second floor access at least and create a doorway so that there would be some security to the second floor unit. Um, so that it's, that's a simple fix, um, so I wouldn't get too uh, caught up in that, but. They will have to create the second egress for that first floor unit somewhere, so that seems to be the most logical way of doing it. But I'll leave that up to the uh, the contractor.
And then we're coming up on our normal seven-thirty break, I have just one quick question regarding e- egresses and everything else. So you intend to take the current first-floor porch, make that a bedroom. Having direct access from that bedroom to the outside, right? Because you'd be able to access that bedroom from the outside.
That's correct.
That's correct, right? Can we get the the floor plan for up, for the, is this the first floor? Give me the the floor plan as proposed for the first floor.
Oh, he's giving me one second to get the appropriate plan up.
I know you're working on it, Mister Burson. So, go ahead.
There we go, okay. That door coming out of the bedroom cannot be considered the second means of egress either, so.
No.
That'll have to be changed, and they can have a door, but it can't be be relied on by the rest of the tenants to be able to use it.
That's the, it's the second floor.
Uh, apologies.
Yeah, first floor, so. We don't have a door here on this plan, so where would the door be? Is there a door into the dining room, or is there a door into the living room, or is there a door into the kitchen from the bedroom?
Uh, there is currently a door where David's cursor is.
And that's it, so you, you, there's a door there now, it looks like it's a window, but that's a door. And where would the door be for, so you have a bedroom, an outside bedroom, you come into there, and then you. And then you could, you, would that be a a third egress, David? If you have a door into a bedroom and a bedroom and a door from the bedroom outside?
Well, once again, you can't egress the the main part of the house through the bedroom.
Yeah.
That is a independent egress for that bedroom only.
Yeah.
It is shown on the elevation, though, as being a door with stairs, so uh, even though it's not shown on this plan, they do show it on the elevation.
Right. Okay. All right, well, we're at seven-thirty-seven, I think, I I think we still have a few questions from board members. I sense that, and we normally take a five-minute break here, I'd like to start that, and then we'll come back. Uh, give an opportunity for the applicant to make some more um, representations if they wish, and we also have public comment. And we have to move to a public meeting at some point. So, um, let's take five minutes, it's seven-thirty-eight now, um, why don't we all return at seven-forty-three? All right?
Sounds good.
Okay, um, let's resume our meeting. Got most people back, Mr. Robits. Are you there? All right. Mr. Brooks, Ms. Williams, we got everybody, we got everybody back. Um, are there additional, who has additional questions? I have one. Oh, Mr. West Evans, I see your hands up.
Yeah, uh, you were asking about how it's been rented in the past. I just went back, uh, through the last eleven years. Uh, in two thousand fourteen, it looks like when the first rental permit started. Um, at that time, it was two dwellings being rented. Uh, two thousand fifteen through nineteen or eighteen, sorry. Two thousand fifteen through eighteen was only one unit, so the owner would have been living there. That was, uh, Margaret Bouvier. Uh, two thousand nineteen, Fay Crosby, uh, registered. And she was renting two units at the time and she did that nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. Um, and then twenty-two and twenty-three are no permits. So there was something going on there where there was nobody registered. And then in twenty-four, it was one unit. So it's, it's been a mix. Now with that said, it's possible people put in two units because they thought that was the question and not the answer, uh, that the, this was a duplex, so it was a two-unit versus how many they actually rented. So, you know, it's, uh, not conclusive that way, but that's what we have for evidence.
David, to give you some color, the broker when I purchased the property informed me that, um, at some point between twenty-one and twenty-three, when the water damage occurred, there were no residents of wherever the damage was. I can't specifically tell you who was living there, who, who wa- was or not, but it was unoccupied.
Yeah, what I recall, the water damage, it was on both floors, both levels. So the only thing that could have been occupied would have been the third floor. That was the only place I think the pipes didn't break. So it was a, a freeze-up. So it was pretty extensive.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. West Evans. Um, other questions from members of the board?
How, how many people are living there now?
Yeah.
Just me and one other person.
Just two of you in the whole house?
Just two of us.
Okay.
And you're, and how many were there? And you said there were two more people that you inherited, so that they're before graduation, then you had a total of four people, including yourself?
That's correct. They, they have since moved out. They've graduated and left. Yeah, the other resident is actually planning on leaving in, I believe, a week as he has also finished his research program.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you have a, a notion on, we don't have a new lease. Uh, one of the items of the existing lease limits a number of people and has some limit on number of people and number of guests. Have you given some thought to, um, number one, a policy on how many guests eh, eh, each bedroom or each tenant can have? And how long those guests can stay? And do you have a, have you given thought to a party limit as to how many people can, um, be on the property for a party? Um, and whether that's for the uh, the, the residents as a whole, or if that's broken down by the two units?
Um, I, I haven't given any concrete thought or solidified any, any direction as to what I would like to implement into a new lease. Um.
But so what I'm telling you, you'll need to do that.
Yeah.
You'll need to have, but not, not someday. I mean, you should, you, you'll need to do that soon. I'm, I'm not prepared to move forward on something with eight, to at least eight, um, people without those kinds of considerations and representations as to what would be in the lease. So I mean, that's something you have to give some thought to right away.
Um, and, and just, uh, oh, sorry.
And also, you, you mentioned that, that you would be the, you're on your management plan that I looked at and the revised manager, a complaint response form that I looked at. It lists you as twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, the principal contact for complaints. You're gonna try to have a, you're going to have a manager in the house who have some role. Either that's, you know, I don't know what that role is. It won't, it hasn't been defined yet, but you wanted an adult to try to um, keep every, sort of manage the place. But they're not the owner and they're not the property management firm. So you listed yourself as a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, but you've also told us that you're gone a lot. Or you could be gone a lot. And you mentioned that there are two other people who would, um, be available if you were not. Who are those two other people and where do they live?
Sure, no problem. Um, just to provide color, I, I could be gone for an extended period of time. I'm not currently gone a lot, uh, nor do I anticipate to be gone a lot. Uh, the two additional people whom I've listed, uh, one is an individual, an individual named Brian Goslaw. He lives in Millburn. And then the second individual, his name is Chaim Edelman. He has a residence in Amherst and he also has a secondary residence in Greenfield.
So the closest, Chaim is, is the person that lives, if you're gone, that's close.
That's correct.
Do something. If there's a, if there's a disturbance or there's a, a broken water pipe and you're not around, he's the closest person. And he has a residence here in Amherst?
That is correct.
Okay.
Um, and just, uh, we, we have included both of them on our complaint response form just for.
Yep, I saw that. I just didn't know whether, you know, how close they were to to the property, to be of, of value.
Um, and, and just to, um, to acknowledge, um, Mr. Judge, your, your previous comment. Um, I have had some conversations with Alec about leases that I've used successfully in the town of Amherst. Um, that incorporates specific language relative to the Amherst, uh, general bylaws, uh, relative to the nuisance policies as well as guest limitations and, and so on and so forth. So I will speak with him about that. And incorporating those terms in his, his new leases.
That's always been, uh, what we tend to do, Mr. Burson, is we tend to make a condition. We, we come up with a number that works for the, for us as well as the property owner. We put that in the conditions.
Makes sense.
So it's something that if this proceeds, we would probably put in conditions. We would put in conditions. We always do. Are, are there other questions, concerns, uh, from board members? All right, I'm just gonna go through my questions before we vote a public comment. Okay. Um, now's the time for public comment. Um, the public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by raising their raised hand function on the Zoom app or pressing pound nine on their phone. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you're called upon or recognized, provide your name and address for the board. And for the record, remember that all comments must be addressed to the board. And I'd like to try to keep your comments to around three minutes. Um, I'll start a timer to try to keep us on track. So I'd like to know, uh, Ms. Williams, if you could help us identify those who are wishing to speak, if we have people in the public who wish to comment.
Mr. Dix McComas is going to be joining us.
Mr. McComas, can you please identify yourself and, um, give us your address?
Oh, hi. I don't, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Dix McComas and I am a member of a coalition of, of.
Mr. McComas, do you live where?
I live at seventy High Street, almost directly across from sixty-five High Street. And since I only have a few minutes, I want to say a couple of things. I have lived here for thirty-six years, so I can fill you in about the history of the ownership of that house. All the way, I have pictures of my thirty-two-year-old daughter in the, in the driveway playing with Fay Crosby. She owned the house twice. So I, I can supply you with information. I do want to emphasize that the house, despite the way it's been characterized, because I think there's been some mischaracterization here by Mr. Beerson and by Mr. Norvitz or Robitz about the neighborhood. Um, first of all, this neighborhood is primarily, yes, there are many, many two families, but almost all those two family houses are owner occupied. And they've been owner occupied for a long time. Um, so the issue is not whether they're two families or single residences. The issue that, uh, changes everything is whether they're owner occupied. That for us is the hinge that i- i- it's the only, eh, eh, the quality of life in this neighborhood, we all believe. And there were six of us or seven of us who signed that letter depends upon owner occupied primary use designations. I mean, I'm listening to what the current owner says and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but he's, eh, where he's gonna be and what he's gonna be doing sounds pretty fluid. Um, I, um, also want to say this. It's easy to determine. Mr. Beerson said that he couldn't determine how many of the houses were non-occupied or owner occupied. It's very easy to do that. My neighbor across the street, in fact, has done that in the last few days and I can supply you with the data to show that this neighborhood is almost, I won't say entirely, but in, in the houses surrounding sixty-five High Street on either side of it, it's their owner occupied. One of the houses has been in the owner's family for over a hundred years. These are people who have lived here a long, long time. And it's quiet neighborhood. It's, um, it's a neighborhood where our, our kids went to school up the streets. We paid our property taxes for over thirty years. And you, it's our belief that if you change a designation, you're changing the nature of the house in a profound way that affects all of us. Now, it's possible um, that the house will be quiet and a sense of decorum will prevail and the police won't be out here. That's possible, but you all know what happens with non-owner occupied houses as a rule. You can look at Gray Street or Taylor Street, which tees into High Street. Now, I also want to say this. Two years ago, that house was bought by two developers from Fay Crosby. They were seeking to have the owner occupied status changed. But they never got it together. The, the process, I think, kind of wore them down. But in any case, I, I just sent, just sent to Williams, a notice of violation that was issued to that house because uh, contrary to what's been said tonight, the owner was not living there. They only, only moved in when that violation notice was sent out. And I think it was November first, twenty twenty-two. So I we, I just want to say this though. Everyone surrounding this house and I can, eh, we could show up on your doorstep. I mean, we did write a letter, but there are other people who didn't sign the letter who are, uh, deeply opposed to this house becoming a full rental property because, um.
Mr. McComas, can you, uh, kind of wrap it up with some, some?
Yeah. So our view is basically by doing this, you are, um, by changing the, the primary usage designation, it's a roll of the dice. And you, the gamble is that it will be taken care of as the current owner and his lawyer are describing. But if it's not, we in the neighborhood kind of own the problem. And I don't hear assurances. I hear a lot of ifs, ands and buts. And that's, that's my, I hope I'm not being disrespectful here, but I am, um, this worries me a great deal.
Thank you, Mr. McComas. Uh, who, who's next, Ms. Williams?
Hi, Mr. Fred Hartwell. Just give me one second to switch out attendees.
Fred Hartwell is Emily Hartwell's dad.
Oh, you're still, you're still on, um, the microphone, Mr. McComas.
Oh, okay.
Put yourself on mute. There you go.
Oh.
Uh.
Um, Fred, you are on with us.
Am I, uh, am I now connected?
Yes.
Am I, are you hearing me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, not, I, I'm saying my name. Uh, I do have a camera. Oh, I, wait a minute, that's the problem. Okay, there we go. Yeah, uh, my name is Fred Hartwell and, uh, I am a direct abutter to the property. Uh, my westerly property line, uh, butts the uh, southeastern property line of, uh, sixty-five High Street. And, uh, the house I live in is an owner occupied free family that I own. And, uh, I have owned this property now fifty-three years. So I want to echo what was said. There are people, uh, in this neighborhood who, uh, are stable and have been here a very long time. And I like to think I've made a contribution to the town. I did two terms on the planning board in the, uh, late nineteen, uh, nineties and I am now back on the planning board for, uh, another couple of terms, uh, right now. Uh, owner occupancy in my judgment is absolutely essential because what it does, it puts uh, uh, it puts an adult on the property, uh, and immediately, uh, accessible to anything that goes on. And, uh, I, I, I think the, uh, statistics are still true that, uh, uh, get the, if you look at the, uh, reports of noise under the noise by law, I, I don't believe there is a single incident of a noise complaint originating in a building that is owner-occupied. I'm not aware of one. And I certainly, the people who lived at my address certainly have not been a problem in that way. And that, so that is, I think, absolutely critical. And I, so I want to support that. The other thing I want to do is just mention that there is a very serious problem with the property description that's on record with the deed for this property. It is absolutely wrong. It goes back, I have done all the research on it, and I've submitted a copy of the analysis to your chair along with staff. But yeah, this, if you grant any permit, one of the conditions should be to correct the property description, and I've done all the work required for an attorney to do that. So I'm happy to answer any questions from members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwell. Ms. Williams, do we have other people that wish to, to, members of the public who wish to speak?
Yes, Catherine Tancredi will be joining us shortly. Catherine, you're in. As a panelist, could you unmute, please?
Yeah. Are you, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, well, my name is Bob Tancredi, and my wife here next to me is the brains of the outfit, and she's Catherine. But I, I know we're running short on time, so I'll go quickly. I'm very concerned about owner occupancy versus non-owner occupancy. I mean, I'm even more concerned now. Alex, is it Alec or Alex? You did a nice job. This is not about you. This is about non-owner occupancy sort of in general. You're the example. But we can't, for the very, you know, Mr. Slovitz spent a lot of money on this property, eight hundred thousand. Realized that it had to be owner-occupied, and that was okay. And I didn't quite get this, but something's changed now with his commute. I don't know, I just don't believe, not that the reason should be the determining factor, but I don't feel comfortable about what that building is going to be like next door with one of the tenants, you know, running the show. No way, that's, that just can't happen in a, in a non-owner occupied. It shouldn't, if it does. Anyhow, that's my point. The play, the, the neighborhood has been kids, schools. Everybody knows each other. My daughter's gonna live here another thirty years. I mean, this is a community. It's not, have you been down the end of High Street onto Main Street and seen those houses that are not owner-occupied? That's what I feel every time one of these appeals comes up. It seems to be our neighborhood, partly because all the multifamilies. But get the word out, they're owner-occupied. And we are a community. We're a neighborhood. That's that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much for your time. And I'm available anytime if anybody wants to ask me anything or talk to me. And I live in the yellow house just to the right on the south side of the house we're looking at. And I don't know how they described it, but it's owner-occupied because I live here. And there's two apartments, two people living upstairs, three people, people living downstairs, parents and a child. And it's all sold as one piece, so it's not just because I'm not in the building, I'm just fifteen feet away from it. It can't be separated. And houses, two houses past that, they're single families. Directly across the street from me, there's a student building, quite obvious. And the next three buildings are all owners, owners living there. Dix lives there to my right. The house we're talking about is owner-occupied. The house on the other side of that, on the north side, is owner-occupied. You know, I, I just really would like to put an end to this because owner-occupied homes keep this town from becoming too transient. We have so many of these high-rise, high-rise buildings now with all these apartments, and that's great. That must have taken some of the pressure off the town having more NOOs. You know, I think the town can pull back and really hold tight to the owner occupancy ruling to balance out what the town looks like and feels like.
Thank you, Mr. Tancredi. Can you summarize? Can you summarize?
Owner-occupied, non-owner-occupied at this stage in Amherst's life, this, the current situation with all these new buildings, we need to go out of our way to protect owner-occupied buildings. We need to give them, we need to give them tax incentives, you know, breaks on other fees. We want families with kids moving into these buildings. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tancredi.
All right, bye now.
Do we have others? Who wish to speak, Ms. Williams?
I don't see anyone else with their hands up. But if I could just share the map that I pulled up, that does show the number of non-owner-occupied houses in the area, I think that might help. One second.
Okay, you know, that's, that was something I was gonna ask you to do, but before we do that, I want to give the applicant the ability to respond to the questions, and then we'll have some time to ask some questions, but I I hope we have the maps that show the owner-occupant status of the, of the block. Okay. So, Mr. Burson and Mr. Robitz, you have now have the opportunity, if you so wish, to respond to those, to any of the comments that you heard?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure if my neighbors are still on, but if they are, I just want to address your concerns. One, I want to start by acknowledging the concerns that you've raised and just express my deep respect for the seriousness for which both the board and my neighbors have engaged in this process. I'm not only here as an applicant, but as a neighbor. And I'm a young guy, and I moved to Amherst. I went to UMass. It's because I care about the community. Like, I didn't just move back here because I just wanted to be Cameron's real estate. I live in the home. I love the neighborhood. And just as you guys raise your families, I would love to grow a life here. And it's not really a vanity project. It's not a student housing play. It's an earnest effort by someone who just wants to remain here and be part of the community. But I need to be able to economically and structurally sustain that, if that makes any sense. I did spend a lot of money on the house, and I just want to be able to quite literally keep my head above water. And to that end, I just want to go one step further. I know we haven't had an intimate chance to meet each other and or sit down, but I'm very
You're speaking to the board, not to the, not to the, direct your comments to the board, not to the commenters. So if you wish to do that, say you intend to talk to people, but don't comment directly to the commenters.
No worries. I intend to most definitely provide my contact information and make myself familiar with the neighbors, just, just so they know that I have no intent on ruining the fabric of this community whatsoever. I simply just I'm trying to legally, within a process, figure out how I can maintain ownership of the house and live in the house and, you know, do so for a long time.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Robitz, Mr. Burson, or Mr. Brooks?
Sure, just, just very, very briskly. And I think Alec did a very good job covering this point, but once again, you know, I know that, that there is a preference for, to some extent, with these non-owner-occupied duplexes for a professional management company. But I think in this instance, you know, it makes a lot more sense to have somebody who actually is a face, somebody you can talk to, somebody who can be called, who's making himself available to the neighbors if there are issues. You know, unlike potentially just getting a number for a business line. You know, I think it's also important to note that this is something that if Alec were to sell this unit or this property to another, another individual, they'd be required, once again, per the Amherst Town bylaws to obtain a special permit for their change in ownership and go through this whole process all over again. And to that point, you know, I think that the, the reality is here is that there is an argument to be made that this potentially is pre-existing, non-conforming, non-owner-occupied use. You know, obviously, that's, that's certainly not the tactic we take. We think that the appropriate situation here is to go through a special permit process with this board and have this formalized in the appropriate way. And to that end, I hope you, the board certainly considers this application favorably for Mr. Robitz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just add to David quickly, Chairman?
Yes, quickly.
I just want to echo, my biggest fear in this whole process is I don't want to be forced out of the Amherst area. I think like every young person, kind of quote-unquote "house hacking" is what's making it economical for a young person like myself to live in a home. I, I don't want the, the my situation with work where I have to pay two rents if I'm traveling for six months, for instance, or twelve months to, to make it uneconomical and for me to be forced to sell the house. That's a, it's a huge concern and a primary motive behind even applying for the restriction lift. And just thank you guys for taking the time. I know we've been on for a while, so I just want to say thank you.
Ms. Williams, do you have that map of the neighborhood?
Yeah, one second. So currently, this map is showing you the number of units within three hundred feet of Alex's or property. And these are the ones that are not, non-owner-occupied.
So the ones outlined in blue are what?
Non-owner-occupied parcels or properties.
Non-owner-occupied, so there's no owner, and they are all rental properties that are not owner-occupied for the people in blue, outlined in blue. Those in gray are owner-occupied, or those are, that's just the?
That's just, this is just the circle of three hundred foot buffer that I've pulled this for. And all of these are non-owner-occupied. I can try to do it for owner-occupied. One moment.
Steve, that's purple.
I, it's
I'm seeing blue and purple.
You guys are funny. Okay, give it a minute. Did it change? Yes, it looks like it did. So these are all the parcels that are owner-occupied.
Are outlined in blue now?
Yes, yes.
So on High Street, next door, so what is it, forty, that one is?
This is, this is sixty-five.
And then the next one, the next one, and the next one are all owner-occupied?
Correct. With the exception of this, this is not
So, what, so we've got them. I don't know what's, did we change? We just changed the circle there? Is that what we, we changed?
No, I just accidentally selected a different parcel. This is sixty-five High Street.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
So these are all owner-occupied.
All owner-occupied, yeah.
And then, would you like me to go back to non-owner-occupied?
I think it's just the, it's the reverse of owner-occupied. I think the ones that aren't, I think we can see that the ones that aren't highlighted in blue are non-owner-occupied.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop sharing.
Does anybody else, before you do, does any member have questions on the map? It seems to me that it's not, it's, it's, it's not overwhelmingly non-owner-occupied property in the immediate neighborhood of the sixty-five High Street. Okay. Are there any further questions from members of the board? Any further clarifications needed by staff? If there are not, I'd like to move to the public meeting portion. Okay. I'm gonna try to change my view here for a second. Somehow, I've managed to change the view on my screen, and I don't know quite how I did that. So what I would like to do is move to the public meeting portion. The public meeting portion is generally where is where the board deliberates, is generally not a time for public comment. We do reserve the right to keep the public hearing portion open in case we need to get additional information from the applicant or seek other information from the public or the staff. So what I'd like, what I would entertain is a motion that we move to a public meeting on this application while the public hearing remains open. Do I have such a motion?
Still moves.
Is there a second?
Don't move.
Yep, so we move the second, is there any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to move to the public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. The chair votes aye. Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
Mr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows? I think, I think that's a yes from Mr. Meadows, even though he's
That is a yes, aye.
Yes, yep, that's an aye. The vote is five to nothing. We're in a public we're in the public hearing while keeping the public, we're in a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. So I, what I'd like to start to do is to try to get a sense before members are on this, on this matter. Before we proceed to look at conditions, look at waivers, look at, and making findings. My feeling is that there's more work to be done here on this application before I'm I'm feeling comfortable with it. I mean, just in terms of, I don't know if the applicant wants to be, it's gonna be a non, it's gonna be gone, or if he's gonna be there. If he's gonna be there, then the non-owner-occupant status isn't a hardship. If he's gonna be gone, then we have to deal with, I mean, if he's, he's gonna be there, owner-occupant status isn't a hardship. If he's not gonna be there, that changes the dynamic of the place that is currently as it has been, and it is different than it looks to me to be the general vast majority of houses in immediate no immediate neighborhood of that, of sixty-five High Street. But, but also, I just don't feel like it's ready for prime time. We don't know how much you want to have for guests. We don't know about the parking has, we need to have the plans for the parking. It's not there. There's, there, I know we need to have a land, a planting plan that's gonna be provided. There's several things that are in the project application report that have to be done before there's, they're requested to be done before certificate of occupancy is granted, many of which we normally require before we approve the, the application. So I'm, I'm thinking that this, if it's I'm not sure that this is ready for prime time yet. And, and I also am not sure that the complaint response methodology that the applicant has outlined, where he's around some of the time, when he's not around, he's got a manager there, one of the tenants, and he's got other people to, who might be able to respond, one of which does live in Amherst. I'm just not sure that that's satisfactory. So and I, because I don't think I know what the description of the project manager's role would be, and that's something we've worked on in the past. So that's where I'm at, and I want to give everybody else an opportunity to speak before we go into deliberation on this. So does anybody, any other board member wish to speak?
Mr. Wyatt?
Mr. Chair?
Wyatt has his hand up.
So Mr. Wyatt is first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would echo everything you just said. As you were speaking, I was sitting here thinking about, you know, my time on the ZBA. And I can't remember, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I can't remember a single instance where we've approved a special, a special permit with a management plan being like, maybe we'll have an onsite manager, maybe we won't. I can't remember us ever approving something like that. There's just far too many Uh there's just far too many kind of maybes in this for me, and I feel like if we were to vote on this and were to vote in the affirmative on it, we would have to list. Nine thousand conditions. And I just do not feel comfortable doing.
Thank you, Mister White. Um Mister Sloviter, I see your hands up.
Yes, let me lower it before I forget. Um. I think there are too many unanswered questions on this. If pressed to vote tonight, I would not be able to vote to approve. So I don't think it's in the interest of the applicant. For us to vote tonight because I can't vote to support this. I have too many questions involving. Not just the non-owner occupancy aspect of this, although I. Feel that that is pretty paramount. There are other questions, even if that. Request was removed from the application. And the applicant committed to live there as a primary residence so that. Non-owner occupancy was not an issue. Uh there are interior questions that need to be answered. The the egress on the first floor, if they. Um the uh Mister Washevitz said that the second. Egress through a bedroom is not an egress, so the it would have to be through the front of the house, the connection between the units. The complaint response. Uh. A site manager for when the owner is not there. Can't easily advertise for a father figure and hope it works. So there are just. Too many aspects of this that are unworkable. And I'm not sure there would be six thousand conditions, but I'm not sure that Philip is high by too many. So I I I could not support this tonight. And I think that, as you said, more work needs to be done addressing all of these things that came up. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Sloviter. Any other member comments?
I I will simply reiterate everything that the three of you have already said and agree with you.
I and 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 I would um mirror that as well. It it is um. I I I think the biggest concern is that for me. I mean, the neighborhood is mixed, so I don't have an issue with the non-owner occupied status. But the residence itself. It's still a singular residence from everything we've learned tonight. It it doesn't and and I would be more comfortable if the town were to go in. Um and specify what needs to be done and to have the owner. Um be in full compliance or create a plan that says, okay. Um these are the things that we were told that needs to be done, and we're gonna be do and we will do these things as part of these conditions. But yes, like everyone says, I I do not believe we are there yet.
Yeah. Um. So I wanna. Summarize that the votes aren't there, Mister Burson and Mister Robits. Um. And the votes may not be there, but there's a chance that you can. Come back with a a um substantially different application. That we would be able to take up. Given some of the concerns expressed by members. I'm not saying that that's gonna. And you heard the concern, so I think it may be a challenge to uh get this approved and non-owner occupancy by in and of itself, but. There are other things that people are concerned about that haven't been addressed yet. So we do allow members to withdraw. And come back with a different application. But I would I would um if you do take that route. I would caution you that it has to be significantly different. I mean, a substantially different application coming back and not just the same application that we look at. I mean, the work that Mister. Henry talked about answering the questions that Mister Meadows and Mister Sloviter talked about and. Uh maybe not nine thousand other changes, but something in one less order of magnitude than that. That Mister White talked about is probably what you the kind of level of change that you need to have to this to have the board consider it again. So your options are twofold. We can vote to to deny it, and that means that that you can't come back for two years. Unless you have a substantially changed application, or you can ask to withdraw it. And um. Come back with it's, you wanna come back with something different. Or you could ask to continue it and come back with something different, and I don't encourage you to do the latter. So either seek to withdraw it or let's go out and and vote on it, and I think you know where the votes are.
Thank you very much, Mister Chair.
So you 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 guys choose. What do you wanna do? Want to withdraw?
Um at this time, um and hopefully this doesn't prejudice our application. Uh we will seek a continuance, um hoping we can address some of these large concerns, and if we are unable to. Uh we will potentially seek withdrawal at the next application or at the next hearing date. So we're seeking a continuance to a date certain.
I so you wanna continue to a date certain, that's a vote of this board to allow you to do that. And I think you have to come back with a substantially different applicant, totally different, not totally, a substantially different application. And if you haven't answered those questions, I think the board is gonna dismiss it pr- fairly quickly. Um. So how? I I guess what I'd like to do is seek the guidance of other, seek the opinion of other board members as to what they'd wanna do um. I would encourage you not to do this, but if other board members would not mind um dealing with this at in some form of time, how long will it take you? Fashion a totally different application, a substantially different application.
Well, when when you mentioned substantially different and and as far as I'm seeing relative to the comments I've seen um from the board as well as the public. Um you know, I understand that we will need to um change the floor plans uh to address the interior changes and separation between units. Uh additionally, addressing uh the management plan as well as the complaint response form uh to essentially alleviate the concerns relative to. The actual management of the property itself. Um so that being said, um and Alec, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I I believe that we can do this um with a continuance. I don't know that we need to. Fully resubmit.
How long?
Um can I have one moment to to speak with uh my client off the uh off of this record for literally maybe three minutes just to? Jump on the phone call. You know, the uh the issues with with the non-in person, you know, if if this were an in-person meeting, we could step outside for a minute, but.
But you what you'd also, what you have to address is the issue of owner occupancy. You heard two members. At least enough, if not three, two members who expressed a concern about that. If that's not addressed in a way. That um answers that I don't know that you you don't know that continues is gonna help you.
Mister Chair.
No, here here's what I would. Yes, Ms. Williams.
Could I just um interject really quickly? So Attorney Burson. I'm hearing you wanting to or considering a continuance. I just wanna preface that by saying. The panel that's here tonight is only available again on June twelfth, and that is um. Mister Chair's last ZBA hearing with us. He is retiring after this, so if. For whatever reason, your application isn't ready by June twelfth, you've essentially. Kind of forfeited your application.
We got a four-person panel, you need four votes.
Under understood, and and I think this is partly why I'm saying uh it's probably worth me taking a three-minute. Break just to to speak with my client if that's okay with this board.
Yeah, you can do that. Why don't you go offline for a second and um we'll we'll continue to discuss as members of the board. Other um whether we wanna do a continuance or whether we wanna dispose of this tonight. They're gonna, they're talking to each other. What are the thoughts of and I think Mister Brooks is still on and that's good because at least. Um representative of the applicant is still on the um the Zoom, so they they are aware of what we're talking about. Um. Are members comfortable with a continuance, or do you think you would prefer to vote this up or down and have them come back at a later date on their own?
I I always favor giving people an opportunity to go back and reflect, and if they think they can satisfy. Um the majority of the concerns that we've addressed here. I mean, we still do. Get the opportunity the next hearing to do an upward a yes or no vote. But um I always favor giving people the opportunity to reflect and try.
Thank you, Mister Henry. Mister Sloviter.
I support what Mister Henry just said. I think I let them, if they wanna come back on June twelfth, it's on them. To commit to coming back June twelfth. Making the necessary changes, perhaps even making the change of dropping. The non-owner occupied aspect of their application. So if they want the chance, I don't have a problem giving them the chance. If they come back, as you said, Mister Chair. They have to come back with a substantial change. If they can do that in two weeks and it comes back and it's substantial enough. Then we can consider it. If they come back with something that's not substantial. We all know where it's going at that point, or at least I have a sense of it. And that's that's on them. I think Mister Henry is right.
I'm just, I I agree, I I tend to always want to. Provide the opportunity for continuance and for people to come back. I'm I also am though sensitive of people's time, maybe my time more than. I normally would be given that I'm not gonna be chairing uh much longer. Um and I am sensitive that if it's not a substantial amount of work, we're gonna spend. Couple of hours dealing with something when there's other things on the board's agenda that we should be dealing with, so I can. I think that's just the price we pay for being on a public board sometimes, so. I'm willing to do a continuance too. Mister Meadows, what do you think?
I I I don't mind spending my time, you know, with a continuance, what um. What obviously we would prefer is for them to withdraw at this point in time, which would give them the opportunity to get some more work done. And you know, they came in with something that was not really well-prepared. We didn't have the information that we need uh and they uh. Maybe they were unaware of of what the situation was, which may be a fault of their realtor. Who whomever they were working with and uh and it's partially our fault. For not for going ahead and and letting them move forward when they weren't prepared. We, you know, we obviously had that with Curtis Place. Um which is even worse. So I I think we've gotta take a look at these things a little more closely before they come to us. And make sure that they are well-evolved and have got everything that they need. Um but it is their choice. Um and uh you know, we we have tried to give people advice in the past and been successful.
Yes, yes, we have.
Yeah, Mister Chair, I would uh I would just echo whatever everyone else on the board has said. Uh I will support a continuance. Uh personally, I don't think it's. Very prudent to travel that path, but it's not our position to tell applicants what they can and can't do with their applications. So I will support uh with the rest of the board.
Great, all right. Um Ms. Williams, will you try to get a hold of Robits and Burson and tell them to come back? On, I think we've given them the the three minutes is sufficient. I don't think there's anything else for us to discuss.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think they can hear us.
We can, we can still hear you, yes, and 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 we uh we had a discussion about this. Um at this time, we are going to withdraw and then attempt to submit um by June tenth, so we'll be on that hopefully uh July.
It doesn't work. You wanna be on a July twenty-fourth date, not the June twelfth day.
No, no, correct. So the the hope is that we can get our ducks in a row to submit early June. Uh and then hopefully back on the July twenty-fourth date. That's our, that's our hope at least.
Hey, hold on a second.
I'm just looking at the submission calendar.
Yep, uh as a lame duck, um I can tell you that I that I'm okay with you doing something like like that, but I'm not sure. If it meets what we what's on the agenda for to that July meeting and. When these, when the submission deadline is, I think one of the things you heard while we were while you were uh having your uh. Discussion with Mister Robits. Is that there seems to be a lot that needs to be done, there are a lot of questions. I mean, just looking at it, I said, I would need more of a plan on the floor. I wanna know where the doors are. You know, it it wasn't there, I'm guessing. There's something, I've got stuff that's hand-drawn that kinda makes sense, but I don't really know um. So there's more work that needs to be done, and if you, I don't know when that the deadline is for the July twelfth. Ms. Williams, when is it for or July?
July tenth is the um first meeting in the new fiscal year. Where we'll have a completely new panel um and completely new board. The deadline is June tenth. For that, so that's what he's referring to.
You've got three weeks to get it in, but then you're starting, you're starting from um in in line. And I don't know if there's other stuff ahead of you, so you don't, just because you withdrew, you don't get the first place to come back. I mean, this this town has to structure whatever um applications are out there.
Understood, I'm just following the submission date, you know, as far as the, yeah.
All right, there's no promises as to date, but but that's the. Your request is to withdraw, all right? Um. Any discussion for members? Do I have a motion to permit to um allow the applicant to withdraw? Is there a second?
Again.
Seconded, any discussion? No discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to permit a withdrawal without prejudice. Chair votes aye. Mister Meadows.
Aye.
Mister Sloviter.
Aye.
Mister White.
Aye.
Mister Henry.
Aye.
All right, so uh motion passes five to nothing um. So I would encourage you to to work with town staff. Listen to the comments that were, uh listen to the video of the ZBA meeting, uh things that are of concern to members. And do a a a really complete job of trying to answer some of those things, and I think it's really important that. Clarity about what the intention of the owner is on occupancy is clear. Cause it right now, I I can't tell you if Mister Robits intends to be there or if he doesn't intend to be there. And that would be a clear thing to for us to decide, cause it's kind of up, it's up in the air now, and I won't be on the panel, so I can, I'm giving you free advice. So I'm just telling you what I think you should ought to do, and I and I I can do that without prejudicing my non-vote on in July. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. And the rest of the panel looks forward to seeing you in July.
Thank you very much.
The next order of business is public comment on matters that are not before the board tonight. Um members of the public have the opportunity to speak if they so choose on any matter not before us tonight. Um if you wish to speak, so so indicate by raising your hand on the Zoom app or. Um using pound nine on your phone. Do we have anybody? Well, it looks like we got one attendee.
Yes, so Mister Dix McComas is coming back.
Mister McComas, you you know, you um had a good comment on a lo- lengthy comment on this last time. Make sure that this comment is not on the matter before us tonight.
Yeah, I just have something um that I would like to say in general, because I've been here and I've been thinking about this a lot and. Talking to my neighbors, and I just uh want to, I really appreciate the care. In detail that you all have brought to the to the plan, et cetera. Um but I I I want to say this, that I think for people who live out here in the neighborhoods. The uh 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 um the ramifications for decisions are really different than say where doorknobs are. And um for us, it has to, everything rides on owner occupancy versus non-owner. And so that's all, and I real.
I I know, Miss Mc, that I understand that arguably kinda close to what we're talking about tonight, so.
That's all I have to say, and I appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anybody else um who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Please comment on matters that are not before the board tonight. All right, I don't see anybody else, Ms. Williams. I think that's it.
No, no one else.
Good enough, all right. Uh the last order of business is. Items that were not before the uh not anticipated in the last forty-eight hours. Normally, we go through the schedule. What do we have coming up?
One moment. One moment, let me pull up the schedule.
While, uh, Ms. Williams is doing that, I want to apologize. Have you guys heard a dog whining during the entire meeting? That's why I've been muted. I'm dog sitting for a friend who's on vacation, so.
In a library?
You with this background?
Take the dog out for a walk. It obviously doesn't read. Oh, well.
It's a very impatient dog.
Very.
Uh, she's a rescue, so I'm pretty sure she's just happy to not be alone.
There you are. That's true.
Yep. Okay, so the next meeting is six twelve. Is that right? And we have nothing on the agenda for six twelve, or is, uh, Curtis Place gonna come?
Cur- Curtis Place is going to be on the agenda. Um, and so far, that's the only thing.
And when is the deadline for, um, putting something on the agenda for that meeting? It's just, it's a couple of days.
They, it's already passed. The deadline for an application
Yep.
Uh, was May fourteenth.
Yeah, okay.
So, again, the issue we're running into here on staff side is balancing out the eagerness of an applicant versus the completeness of their application. I think Dave can also speak to that as well. We try very much to get them ready before they come to the board, but you know, we can only provide so much, um, how do you say, guidance? And then we kind of have to sometimes let go and say, okay, we've give, we, we've told you, we don't want to say we told you so, but go before the board, hear what they have to say. It's not necessarily going to be any different from what we told you, but sometimes people need to just go through that process. Um, we can't do anything about it other than to just work with them. And then if they really want to go before the board, then we're like, okay. Um, this is what we have. So Dave and I are working to try to make sure people are a lot more complete in their application before they get to you. But again, um, we do walk that fine line of the pressure from the applicant versus how complete their application is. And Dave, I don't know if you want to chime in on that at all.
Well, I was just gonna say, everything you're saying is true. And we try to anticipate what the board might ask or think about, and it's impossible. There's always something that somebody comes up with that throws us a curveball and we have to come up with a, an answer, or have the, the applicants need to come up with answers. So, uh, we do the best we can with, uh, what we're giving, given, and and it is true. I mean, some of these applications, they take months and months before people are ready, in our eyes, to be ready to go. And then they get frustrated by us having to request things. And then at the, by the time it gets to the board, um, it's been a while for them. And then, and then there's more that comes after you've reviewed it. So.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I do appreciate that, that, the job that the stat has to do in, in trying to counsel applicants as to the completeness and of their draft, uh, of their application and, and how much work that is. There's one thing that I feel that I could have, that I would, looking back, I would do differently. And that is that if I sense earlier on in a hearing, that the application isn't ready for prime time. And, um, I would, I would think that, as the chair, one of the things I should be do, I should have been doing is voicing that early on in the, in the hearing. But I'm the optimist. I always thought, well, they'll clear it up. Right? They'll figure it out. They'll see what we're thinking about and they'll make the representations to figure it out, or they'll say, we'll come back quickly. But, um, it is important for the staff, it's really important for you to counsel people and tell them that they're not ready. If, uh, if they're really not, and, um, and then we should back you up by, by perhaps earlier in the process, telling people they're not ready, uh, we're not ready to, to decide that application at this time.
So, Mr. Henry? So, Mr. Chair, um, so just to piggyback on what Craig said earlier in the public meeting, and, and I completely agree with him. Um, that it wasn't ready to be brought before us and to, um, Ms. Williams and, Mr. Williams. I'm gonna put your name, what's gave us his points, what's gave us his point. Um, so it, i- is there no mechanism where, um, you know, in an admin meeting before it gets to um, an actual public hearing, public meeting, for us to review just documentation to say, um, like most appeals courts, or, you know, before they actually decide to hear a case, they review certain things before they say, we'll hear this case. Um, so are there any mechanisms where, you know, or can we create, um, maybe a template to, of, of maybe some standard things that say this must be present before it comes to us? And if it's not there, then the town staff knows this is not something that the board will decide to hear, because again, um, from this checklist that we created together, um, there are certain things that is missing from this checklist. Or, you know, if, if the checklist won't work, then an admin meeting to just literally review submissions to say, okay, we have enough submissions where now we can move forward with an actual hearing.
So the rules and regulations do lay out a lot of that. It's just if, if it's not creating enough information with what that even states, then maybe it needs to get reviewed and updated. But, um, that's basically our guide to, to presenting to the board. Um, but even with a management plan, if there are things missing within the management plan that maybe isn't recognized right away, but is considered a management plan, um, you know, that would be something that the, would happen in the hearing most likely, and ask that to be updated like tonight. And, uh, for the, for the reasons stated.
Um, I think, I, just to respond to that as well, I think that's, it's about how much time and effort, uh, ZBA members want to put in, in addition to the hearings that they already have to be present for. So it's not necessarily saying no, that we can't create a mechanism. Um, I just want to make sure the lines aren't being blurred between what the role of the town staff should be, and then what the expectations that town staff and the public would have of ZBA members. So it's open for discussion. Um, I certainly do think it could be helpful. But again, that's something, you know, say next fiscal year for a new panel and a new cohort to discuss, if they'd like to incorporate that. And then Dave and I will figure that out on the staff side, how to put that into the rules and regs. We'll talk to the building commissioner, we can work that out. But I'm just putting forward, um, points to consider, really.
I have a question that pertains to Curtis Place, which I'm not certain if we can discuss now. Uh, it's more of a point of information?
Well stated, generally.
Yeah. Um, if something is being brought to us with a label that is not correct, and by that I mean, if it's brought to us as a rehab as opposed to a new building. It would seem that that affects the, the information that is required. And if that information is not forthcoming because of the mislabeling by the applicant, then how should that be handled? Am I too general?
No, no, no. I think that's a great question. And I think we ran into that with sixty-five High Street as well. It's one of those things where you get the application, we're determining completeness, and we generally aren't going down like too far down the rabbit hole to figure out like everything before we put it out there. But because we're doing the P A R after the application is submitted and paid for and we're, we processed it. Um, but again, that's another part of our process is how much do we do even before we, we say, okay, we're putting you, we're giving you a hearing date and we're processing your application and we're going to move forward. So because we didn't discover a lot of this until after, right? You know, the application comes forward and they say we're removing the owner occupancy requirement. And as soon as I started working on the project application report, I thought this is not right, because you go back, you look at the history, this, i- it becomes a completely different application request. But by that time, it's already been advertised, it's already been put out there in the butters notices. And so in the project application report, the most that you can do is just say, wait a minute, the initial request was incorrect. Here's what it should have been, and here's how it should be moving forward. Um, I can try to think a little bit more about that, Mr. Meadows, as to how we can circumvent that. And, and Dave and I can certainly work on that. I don't know, you wanted to add anything else, Dave?
Well, I was gonna say the, uh, by the next, well, their next hearing, uh, speaking about that. But, uh, we have a chance to um, re-describe what's going to be heard on the, on the next special permit. So that will be accurately depicted in that case. But, um, yeah, I mean, we're going by what people present, and it, it takes a little bit of exploration on our part to make sure things are submitted correctly. And, and sometimes it just doesn't get caught. And I mean, it's, uh, but like what was, you were mentioning, uh, Mr. Meadows, is, uh, it was pretty clear with the particular project that it was not a, an alteration or renovation. It was a total removal and rebuild. So, um, people should know that before they submit. I'm not sure what happened in the transition, but.
What's some good thoughts for the next? For the next ZBA?
Screen Bob has her hand up.
Yep.
I just want to say a couple of things about, um, my history on the zoning board is we used to do most of our homework. We didn't have reports from the staff and we sat there with the books and we figured out what sections of the bylaw would, would apply to particular application. And the other thing I've been thinking about, particularly after the, the one application that will not be named tonight, um, that people need to be aware that design is a very important part of fitting into a neighborhood. And part of, I think people need to be encouraged to take a, you know, a ride around town and look at what other people are doing in terms of two-family houses and how they fit in the neighborhood. And I was giving an example, since it's not related to my family, is, so what, um, the units that Barry Roberts built at Sunset and Fairing, because they are certainly not uh, you know, out of controlled fancy, but they are attractive because they've got certain architectural details on them that aren't um, exceedingly expensive to do. I'm not requiring that they have copper flashing like some people do, but, but you know, just to have some kind of trim like window sills and, and framing around windows, corner boards and things like that that you can put on, on a, on a less expensive house. But encourage people, it costs people so much money to get all of the permits in place by the time even planning board looks at and zoning looks at and conservation, you might as well go out and hire an architect. Look around and, and see what makes a building look attractive and what doesn't, because I think part of ten point three eight impact on the neighborhood is to maintain your a butters equity in their own property. You want to put up something that obviously looks like student housing that you're gonna fill out with student housing, and you're not gonna put in any landscaping because it catches um, red beer cups in the, in the, on the weekends. You gotta be prepared to send people around on Monday morning to clean up. And if the, you know, you can't be absolved from making a landscape plan because those tenants are gonna trash it. That's not part of ten point three eight, because you're not maintaining your neighbor's equity. So I, I think that people need to be encouraged to look at what other better developers are doing for two-family housing. And point out that, what is the number, three point two one, or three point two oh, the, the design review is part of making a developer, um, their building fit into the neighborhood. And so, um, I just, I mean, uh, so coming from, spending all that money, they might as well spend it on doing something good, than something crappy is what I'm trying to say at this hour of the night. That's where I'm coming from.
Greenbaum, that's, that's, that's sage advice.
Land on, on the east side of, of, uh, North Whitney Street there, all has a green lawn name on it. And nobody ever has a complaint from over there.
All right. Thank you, Hilda.
I feel strongly about that whole issue of, of, but I also at the same time know there are plenty of single-family owner occupied houses that look like bar, like pigsty. So, anyway, you got, you gotta realize that, you know, you're talking in majorities or whatever probabilities rather than, anyway, it's like.
All right, folks, uh, good thoughts. Um, anything else that people wish to bring up? No?
I think we, we all got a letter today.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. Yeah. I mean, I got an email today. I
Yes, an email.
Yep, yeah. Um, yeah, John is, um, I hope, that's a tough thing.
He was, he was a tenant in my, in the building on North Whitney Street. He was with, with Hyam Gunner. He worked for Hyam in the eco science for a long time.
I didn't want to broadcast it.
I sent him a note and said, he's got the same thing that almost everybody my age has got, so.
But it's, it's timely, it's fashionable, man.
That's, that's pushing it, Hilda.
He wrote to the right group if he wants solidarity, so solidarity.
Hey, look, I've been through three generations of it.
So just to remind everyone, June twelfth is Steve's last meeting with us.
We should have a party.
I was gonna ask, but I didn't know how everyone felt about that.
How they feel about him.
I think we should have a party and, and if, if it got spouses, bring those spouses. Um.
A Zoom, by Zoom?
Well, I don't, I don't think-
At the time we met each other. And people in person.
Oh my God. Zoning people in person? I have to be in the same room with you people? Goodness.
I think, David, we have over the years, because I got a lot of friends on your street.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And hey, David, you gotta remember, I gave my seat to you last year. I gave up my three-year term so you could have it.
Guys, I don't mean to be rude, but I've got to get this dog walked. Uh, can we? Kind of.
I have, I have a dog to walk also.
A lot of pressure there.
Okay, so it sounds like there will be some sort of gathering around the twelfth, not on the twelfth, because that's going to be virtual and we will continue to hold the same model. But yes, I wanted to put that out there. So thank you for the feedback on that. Um, so, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you if you wanted to, uh.
Let us all go home now? Yes, I'm for that. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I get to do this one more time after this, that's great. Uh, the, the motion is not debatable? The chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Slavater?
Eagerly aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Henry?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five to nothing. We are adjourned. Alright, motion carries, five to nothing, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everyone.
Everybody, walk the dog, Philip, walk the dog.